With that tap of the gavel, I would like to call the Seneca Valley School District, School Board Action Meeting of December 7th, 2020 to order. At this time, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance, I'll turn it over to Ms. Andracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Our I-Led the Pledge student this evening is third grader from Connequenesing Valley Elementary School, Isla Perry. Isla, why don't you come up and join us at the microphone? Let's welcome Isla. So Isla is the daughter of John and Jody Perry. You might recognize Jody. Welcome back. Good to see you. Isla was nominated for tonight's I-Led the Pledge by Mrs. Deanne Graham, CVE Principal, and Mrs. Tina Francis, CVE Assistant Principal. Ms. Graham is here tonight. Thank you for being here with us. Mrs. Graham is also being joined by Ms. Donna Schaefer, who happens to be Isla's third grade teacher. So we want to thank Ms. Schaefer for being here this evening as well. To share just a little bit more about you, with you, about our I-Led the Pledge student tonight, Isla tells us her favorite subjects in school are math and reading. Her favorite color is teal, and she is currently a competitive dancer with the Star styled Dance Center in Cranberry Township. When she grows up, she would like to be a baker or a dance teacher. And I understand, Isla, that you are excited to be here this evening, to be invited to attend, and you wanted to tell somebody thank you. Do you want to tell us who you would like to thank?
Mrs. Graham, Mrs. Francis, and Ms. Schaefer.
And why did you want to thank them tonight?
Because they invited me.
Because they nominated you? So we're excited to have you here this evening, and at this time, we would like all of you to join us in saying the pledge as led by Isla. So if you're able to, please stand here and at home. Isla, when you're ready, go ahead and start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to hold the Constitution, one, under God, and the people, and liberty, and justice.
Now, earlier this evening, before you all came in, Isla received her I-Led the Pledge t-shirt, medal, and Seneca swag as a thank you for being here this evening. So once again, thank you, Isla. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll have the roll call. Lisa, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradle?
Here.
Mr. DiTulio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Whitterson?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move into our information reports, and our first order of business will be student and staff recognition. Again, Ms. Andracy.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We are very excited to have with us tonight some very special guests. These are your state champs. The Seneca Valley Boys Soccer Team, under the direction of head coach George Williams and assistant coaches Jay Roman and Scott Stewart, made school history on Saturday, November 21st, when they won the PIAA Boys for a State Championship. And to tell you a little bit more, Ms. Heather Lewis, our athletic director, will join us.
I'm pleased to have a tremendous group of young men and great representatives of our district here tonight. I think beyond the trophies, what I shared with this group was what they learned through sport, which anybody that knows me, I believe in education through sport. This group of young men learned about trust, and they learned about faith. And when the chips were against them throughout the entire playoff run, they never once doubted each other, they never lost faith that they would have another game to play, and they certainly trusted the teammates that sat beside them or played beside them every single day. And I think those are wonderful foundations that we can give young people through sport, that there is, if you have trust, and you have faith, and you have teamwork, a lot of great things can happen. And I shared that with them, and Hershey, and I'm pleased to share that tonight. This group wouldn't be where they are tonight without three tremendous coaches that I think this district is gifted to have. Head coach George Williams, who won his 300th game this season, assistant coaches Jay Roman and Scott Stewart, and certainly support staff Marissa Johnson and Nicole Lolo as our trainers. It is my pleasure to bring up George, and I think he's got some hardware on his hands, and Jay Roman, and to share it with the board and the community. And I publicly want to congratulate this group of young men. I want to thank them for being tremendous representatives of how to win with class, and how to make it exciting, and how to give Ms. Lewis a few gray hairs as I watch them overtime games and come from behind. It's been a pleasure. No doubt, in a very challenging year, you have shown this district and this community and this state who really is the best, and it's the Seneca Valley Raiders. Congratulations, men.
I'll make sure that everyone can see these real quick.
And while Mr. DiTulio is doing that, while he's showing that to the folks at home, I want to tell you while, as a school district superintendent and on behalf of the administration and all of your teachers and teacher aides and cafeteria and all of the adults that work here, that while schools love to win, what I love more is when we have a team with character. To win a state championship in a pandemic, unbelievable, unbelievable. I know about so many individual stories with each one of you. You might think, well, the superintendent doesn't know me. I beg to differ. Your coaches, your teachers, your athletic director, the things that they have told me about the sacrifices you made to make it to this level has been unbelievable this year. I am not surprised you've made it to this level because this is a very talented team. And while it's great to have talent and skill, it's more important to me and to everyone in this district that you have character. And as I would watch the live stream, and I would read the newspaper articles the next day, the one that brought tears to my eyes, and I know you think I'm a girl and I cry a lot, but Ms. Lewis could tell you, there's not much that makes me cry. But when I got up in the morning and read a newspaper article about what underclassmen did for some of these seniors in this group, it was unbelievable. What the public didn't know was some of the quarantines that you were facing, and everybody stepped up to make it happen. Underclassmen stepped up to help the seniors get to the next level. It's unbelievable to me what you did for one another. And so, yes, teamwork and faith, but I would also say character that you will carry with you for the rest of your life. Thank you for making us proud, but thank you even more for being a family and loving on one another to get you the win, to get you the victory. Undoubtedly, I agree with Ms. Lewis. These coaches are some of the best I have ever seen in my life. I've been in education a long time in five school districts. I've seen state champions in other districts, but I have not seen state champions with this kind of character and heart. And so, again, I say to you, I am so proud of you. I am more proud of your character than these trophies, although they're pretty nice, too. Thank you to the coaches, and thank you to the people sitting way back there, your parents, because I know they got you out of bed. I know they were reminding you what you had to do in a remote environment so you would be eligible to play. I know the meals that they made. I know that how many times they had to drive you to practice and pick you up. I know the sacrifices those parents made. So thank you, parents, and to even the parents that couldn't be here tonight. Thank you to everyone who embraced this program. That is a win. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Coach, would you give anything you'd like to add before I look for the board comments?
Well, I didn't really prepare anything, but I want to say a big thank you to you, the school board, for continuing to support us and what we do so that these players and young men had the opportunity to do what they did, because we know without your support, that wouldn't have happened. So thank you very much for that. Thank you once again to the parents who were here and not here, again, for, like Dr. Vitale said, everything that they did. And again, a great big thank you to the coaches, to Ms. Lewis. Thank you so much. And again, the biggest thank you to the guys, to the players. Thank you all for a great ride and for being, again, I mentioned it, I think, at the end of the game, last game, there's really nothing ordinary about anything this season. And long story short, it made them all extraordinary. So again, thank you guys for being extraordinary. Thanks.
Thank you, Coach. I'll look around the screen to see if there's any board members who have, Ms. Whittle?
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio. I don't even know where to start. I'm going to start with, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you, coaches. But Dr. Vitale pretty much summed up what I really wanted to convey to this group of young men, to their families, and to the staff. When she talked about character, I wanted to talk about commitment, their commitment, their sacrifices, but a word that this generation is accused of not having is grit. And if you don't know what that word is, look it up, because I actually, we were talking amongst the board last month, that some of these board members woke up at 3:00 a.m. and saw your game. I was privileged enough that I watched the whole thing. I have a neighbor, Mr. Vitatliam Lavalley, they kept calling him, Laval. So I kind of was interested in it, and it was the best entertainment that I had during COVID. I was so excited for those group of men. They never stopped. For the parents, I want to thank them, because this journey, even for these kids, this started when they were eight, nine years old, playing Seneca Valley soccer, when they were playing club soccer, and the commitment. And this is something that nobody can take away from them, and I hope that they treasure this. It sounds like they know that they're an elite group, but I want to thank everybody and how proud we are of how you handle yourself and your character. And I can't wait to see those trophies in the showcase across from the athletic director. And when you come back as an alumni, they'll always be there to remind you of what you meant to this school this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Were there any other comments from the board? Looking around, Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. DiTulio, there are, there's some records and championships that get asterisks next to them. In my view, this one needs an exclamation point next to it. It is incredible, the roller coaster that we've been on in every aspect of life, to put together a championship season under those conditions, I think are incredible. And on a personal note, thank you from me, as all the board members can attest, we got a lot of updates around some very challenging topics as it relates to the pandemic, and to track, to get updates on this team, and to see this in the middle of that was really uplifting, I think, for the whole community, but for me as well. So thanks, Coach Williams. Thanks, boys. Great work.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Anyone else with comments? Seeing no other hands, I'll add my own in here. This is a special group. I've known a lot of you since you were probably eight years old and first started playing. And Coach, I actually coached them in indoor soccer. So granted, I was the guy that just opened the door, but, you know, I started their careers for you, so it made easy.
Thank you.
You're up. These, this group of boys is amazing. The grit, the determination. I've always been so proud of you, and knowing your families, that some of them I've known for over 40 years, some of them I've known through you and my son. And your parents are some of the best people I think I've ever met, and that is quite apparent, seeing each and every one of you and what you've done and where you've gone. The fact that you self-quarantined as a team was amazing. People don't know those little things that you did. To see what you guys have accomplished, not just this year, but over the last, you know, 10 years, it is truly amazing. You've made a program that was good, great. You personally have done things that people wrote you off, and the way you came back to battle through things, it was amazing to see. I am proud of each and every one of you, and I wish you the best in the future, those coming back. I hate to say it, but we kind of have an expectation, how guys, I mean, step up for next year, too. And anything that you do, you always make us proud. And, you know, as Ms. Whittle said, when you guys come back as alum, these will be there. And I guarantee you, someone that graduated from here, you still go look for people that you know on those boards, but when it's your name up there, it's even more special. So again, congratulations, and thank you very much. And again, thank you for coming here in the middle of COVID, because this was special and the fact that you all came here, we greatly appreciate it. So that's it, Coach. I appreciate everything you did, and you guys don't have to stay for the meeting, but you're more than happy to. You know how boring this can be, right? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if you could do us a favor, if you could stand and wave to the camera in the back, those are our viewers at home. They've been seen the back of your head, so I think they might like, there we go. Thank you again, and congratulations. Thank you.
Just give us a few minutes here. We're just, oh, we're just going to get cleaned up a little bit. All right, so we'll continue on with student and staff recognition. Ms. Andracy.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Under item number two for student and staff recognition, the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh recently announced that Jim Luko has been named 2021 Holocaust Educator of the Year. The award, five years, sorry. The award was begun five years ago in the interest of recognizing and encouraging excellence in Holocaust education in the tri-state area. Mr. Luko has been a leader among Holocaust educators for decades. He never stops learning, recently developing and completing, excuse me, recently completing a master's degree in Holocaust studies, for which he traveled the country, visiting Holocaust memorials. And there is more information in your backup that further details the award and his level of experience and education. So we congratulate Mr. Luko on this wonderful award. Item B, dates to remember, December 12th, a senior high school AC testing date here at the senior high school at 7:30 a.m. We currently have 38 students signed up to attend. December 23rd through January 1st is our winter break. There will be no school for students or staff. And on January 11th, we will return here for a school board work session meeting at 7:00 p.m. And that is all I have, Mr. President. Let's have questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Andracy? Seeing none, we'll move on then to our agency reports. And Mr. Peterson, Mr. Nickel, or Mr. Jacobs? Any update from, yeah, I'm not sure who's going to go first, or from the, I'm sorry, from the vote tech?
I'll start, Mr. DiTulio. Couple of things, like everyone else, the vote tech's been plagued by the COVID outbreak. They're currently until December 1st conducting their business online. 12, until 12:14, though, from the end of that point, at 12:14, they'll go to the hybrid model, and the plan right now is on January 11th to return to full in-person. Of course, all of that's dependent on the evolution of the virus. On a sad note, the Christmas cookie sale was canceled this year. Dr. Hyler on 12/4 reported to the JLC that she came up COVID positive. She does not believe she was in close contact with any school staff or personnel and is at home recuperating. And our next meeting of the JLC is this Thursday after next on the 17th of December. Other than that, all's well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, I'll just, I will just add, on the same day, we'll be having a meeting of the Authority Board, which is the entity that oversees the real estate. There is a minor setting of potential for a refinance of the bond issue that all other, the other six, seven districts undertook. I'll have more feedback from everyone, for everyone following that meeting. As all of you know, folks who are joining the meeting, Mike Jacobs is going to step up as the, one of the two lead liaisons, but I'll stay on the Authority Board at least for the next year and see them through whatever might happen with the refinance. Some more to come.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. If there's nothing else, then we'll continue on with the IU. We do have our meeting next Wednesday. At our last meeting, we basically went through standard business items, but one of the big ones is there's an HVAC issue that we're still trying to tackle, so we're receiving more presentations and bids to, you know, look into that work and what needs to be done there. It was something we were hoping to do sooner, but just the timeframe of it's going to push it into the late summer and early fall of next year. So hopefully, we'll have that within a better budget than what everyone's expecting, and we'll have all that work complete next year. Any other updates I will give you at our meeting in January? So if there's no questions on any of the agency reports, which I'm not seeing any hands or anything, I will move on to legislative. And Mr. Peterson, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's little to report at the federal level regarding the Department of Education. Most of the activity in Washington now deals with the fallout from the November election, seeking by camera agreement on the COVID relief bill and passing a budget bill which will obviate the need for government shutdown on December 11th. The good news is, in many of the bills that are being forwarded for COVID relief, there is funding for, under various models, for education. And the other thing, of course, that people are watching is the incoming president, the president-elect, who Mr. Biden, Mr. Biden will select for his Secretary of Education. It appears, however, from various policy statements that Mr. Biden's made, that there will be a great deal more support for education than there has been in the past. At the state level, the General Assembly closed the 2019-2020 session on November 30th. With the end of the general session, all legislative activity ceases, and any bills being considered die and must be reintroduced when the new session convenes on January 5th, 2021. Before Harrisburg began its holiday break, the governor signed a bill adding $11 billion to the Commonwealth's operating budget, bringing the total annual budget to $35.5 billion and avoiding the need for a continuing resolution or government shutdown. You might remember that last summer, in order to hit the first of the fiscal year, the legislature approved a partial budget, so this 11 billion will complete the fiscal year's budget. Prior to legislative close, the House and Senate achieved concurrence on House Bill 1737, which would have provided limited liability for school districts from COVID-19-related legal claims. Governor Wolf vetoed this bill. In his veto statement, he said, "Shielding entities from liability in such a broad fashion as provided under this bill invites the potential for carelessness and a disregard for the public safety." So again, we're at the end of the session, so any further legislative action will actually reintroduced after the first of the year. And that pretty much sums up my report, Mr. DiTulio, unless anyone has any questions.
Mr. Peterson, looking around the screen, I am not seeing anyone with questions. So we will move on to the Cranberry Township residential developments. Dr. Vitale?
Thank you. In accordance with the requirements of the municipality's planning code, as amended by House Bill Number 823, any township or borough in our district is required to send the school district notification anytime a residential development is granted final approval in the planning stages. I'm pleased to report that Cranberry Township has recently notified us that the Laurel Point Development on Franklin Road, south of Route 228, has received their final approval. This will allot for 168 single-family residential units, for a total of 168 units, and the expected construction date is this winter of 2020. And the residential plan has added another phase and increased the total lots by 11. So it's always great when one of our townships, municipalities notify us that construction, new construction is continuing, and it's certainly great for our region, for tax revenue as well, and for more children coming to our district potentially. So I want to thank the district for staying the course on the new building at Ermin, because we are going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Are there any questions for Dr. Vitale on the residential developments? Looking around the screen and seeing none, we'll move on then to the COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitale, again.
Thank you very much. So the first item, normally I go over the stats on the dashboard, the Seneca Valley dashboard, and during the break, we decided not to update that dashboard, and we will not update it during remote instruction. And the reason for that is, since we've moved to remote, many parents are not notifying us that if a child comes up positive, and that's because they don't have to, number one, and number two, they may feel that we don't need the data right now. So I can tell you that we have had, to our knowledge, seven more student cases that we know of, and eight staff members since we have not been updating that dashboard. Staff members are very good about reporting to us, because as you know, it relates to work, and they're very good about reporting to the nurses and working through potential quarantines and things of that nature. But since we're not doing contact tracing without students in the building, when it comes to student cases and quarantines, those quarantines have been much lower, but those that we are aware of, we still do have a handful of quarantines in our district, and that is not as a result of any contact tracing we would do at school. So the other reason we're not updating the dashboard is it was developed as a public-facing dashboard so that parents could decide for themselves whether they wanted to send their children physically to school or not. And while we're in remote, that will not be updated, so I wanted you to be aware, but I will continue to update the board in public periodically in board meetings. The next item I would like to discuss is community transmission rate by county. Butler County is now in our fifth week of substantial. As you know, the Department of Health classifies counties based on low transmission, moderate, or substantial. We are at the highest level, and many counties are. As a matter of fact, there are less than 10 counties that aren't in substantial. I do want you to be aware that our incident rate in Butler County is 300.7, and our PCR rate is 12.8%. That is public information on the COVID-19 Early Warning Monitoring System dashboard. There are other data points there as well, as far as hospital capacity, ICU, patients in ICU, and patients on ventilators that we pay attention to as well when it comes to community spread. In order for Seneca Valley to go back to in-person instruction, five days a week, we need to be, according to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health, we need to be, as a county, in the moderate range. We need to have less than 100 new cases in a seven-day period, and we need to hit other benchmarks, benchmarks, like the PCR positivity rate. It needs to be lower than 10% in order for us to be in a five-day-a-week in-person model and to have that as an option. So I do want you to be aware, that is one of the many benchmarks that we're taking a look at. Now, you may say, but we had a week of substantial, and you were still in an in-person model. That was before the new changes from the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Department of Health. Over the Thanksgiving break, Mr. Over the Thanksgiving break, Mr. Nickel as board president and myself had to sign an attestation form, and there were new rules handed out about when schools are in substantial. We have conveyed many of those to our parents and will continue to convey as changes are taking place sometimes on a daily basis. There are now also, based on that attestation form, there are new thresholds for closing our buildings once we are back in session in person. And so our goal has always been to offer as much instruction in person for our students that we possibly can in the safest way. When we return, and we're hoping to do that in January, and I'll talk more about that later tonight, the new thresholds for closing are much more stringent, I will tell you. We had been asking, school superintendents had been asking the Pennsylvania Department of Education to update the recommendations for pre-K to 12 schools following identification of cases, of COVID cases in our buildings. We felt that big schools were being punished, and it was a, one number fits all. And at that point, the state responded with, these are recommendations, you, they're not requirements. Since that time, once we sign the attestation form, we have to agree to follow this new chart when we are in substantial. The attestation form applies when we are in substantial. We have to agree to any new recommendations on the universal face masking, which Dr. Pallano will talk more about this evening as we've updated that, and we have to agree to follow this chart to the letter. So the new chart will be in a letter to parents tonight. You may have already seen it. And by way of example, all of our elementary buildings are considered a medium-sized building based on enrollment. And while we are in substantial, in a medium-sized building, we are looking at a three-to-seven-day closure for four to six students or staff with COVID-positive notifications to the school, and seven or more cases, students and staff combined, could cause a 14-day closure. As we go on in that chart, it also has a recommendation, which is now a requirement if you're in substantial and you've signed the attestation form, that for large buildings, those would be any of our secondary buildings, they fall within that enrollment category, more than 900 students in the building, that is Ryan Goyer Intermediate High School and Senior High. As long as you're in substantial, you could be looking at a three-to-seven-day closure or 14-day closure, depending on the cases. Again, that's six to 10 students or staff or 11-plus students to drive those different variables. We won't have a choice about those temporary closures like we did in the past. In the past, we could analyze the context. In the past, we could look at siblings because they're in the same household and count that as one case instead of two. In the past, we could take a closer look at household contacts and source of where the person believes they got COVID. We can no longer apply that context of household contacts, and so that no longer matters. So even if you would have three siblings in one building, that counts as three separate cases now, not one. And so as you can see, the state has set the threshold pretty low for us, and we must follow it now. If Mr. Nickel and I would have refused to sign the attestation form, they would have closed us and put us in remote anyway. So by signing it and agreeing to the new recommendations as requirements, we at least have some flexibility if and when the county goes back to moderate. We must be in moderate for two consecutive weeks in order for us to go to the five-day instruction model. But so long as we are in substantial and we're following this temporary closure chart, we do have some leniency to go to the cohort model in January, and I'll talk more about that later. Local data, as you know, as a school district, we have been tracking the county, we have been tracking, tracking Seneca Valley zip codes, and of course, looking at the state numbers, but for our purposes of whether or not we are safe to be in school on, and looking at community transmission, I want to give you an example of what we looked at in August versus today. The Seneca Valley zip codes, when we opened school, when I say open school, we allowed teachers to come back in, and then we phased our students in via cohort and then to the five-day in-person model. When we first opened school, we were seeing four to five new cases on average per day. I'll say that again. We were seeing four to five new cases in Butler County on average per day. Today, we are seeing 100 new cases per day on average. Our latest 14-day rolling average, just looking at our zip codes, was 118.4 new cases per day in the Seneca Valley zip codes. Now, obviously, not all of those cases come into our schools. But I know that many people have listened to an excerpt from the CDC Director, or they've listened to an excerpt from Dr. Fauci. And we all want things to fit our specific narrative. We're human beings. And so we take a snippet of that and we send it off to the school superintendent, or we take a snippet of that and we share that with our relatives. I listen to the entire interview when you send me the snippet. I go back and find that. I want you to be aware of that. And so when the CDC and Dr. Fauci say it's safe to be in schools, that's right, they say that, that should be our default, but they add a context about community transmission levels. They add a context, Dr. Fauci's interview, he said, close bars keep schools open. I'm not suggesting we close bars. That's not for me to decide, but as you know, we have not closed bars. And I recognize that as a livelihood for many people who own those bars. So I'm not suggesting that. I just would encourage our community, when you hear an interview by the CDC Director or Dr. Fauci, to listen to all of it. I also would want to point out here that local community numbers matter, because when we were seeing the four to five new cases on average per day, we weren't seeing many cases in our buildings. And before we went to remote, we were seeing significantly more cases in our buildings. Now, some may say, well, not in our elementary buildings, no, but as the local medical advisors with whom I consult have reminded us, that just because you don't see the children's numbers, COVID cases in your buildings, doesn't mean they're not getting it. Many parents have chosen not to test young children because the test is pretty uncomfortable. In addition, they could be asymptomatic. We don't know. I am not a medical doctor. I have a doctorate in education. I know instruction. I know curriculum. I know schools. I have to rely on the medical experts, especially those locally, who are working in our hospitals, working on our front line, who are infectious disease experts. And they have shared with me that they have seen a four-fold increase in COVID cases in Butler County just from October to November, and they are warning us that we have not yet seen the Thanksgiving get-together numbers. The next item that we had to agree to on the attestation form was that we will socially distance when children are unmasked, which means either during a mask break, which is easier to achieve, but also at lunch. And in the five-day in-person model, we cannot achieve that. We have Plexiglas, we have a lot of Plexiglas, but at this point, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, they have not said that the Plexiglas takes the place of six feet of social distancing. Early on, they encouraged us to buy it, and it may keep students from getting COVID, but it would not, as we saw before we went to remote learning, necessarily keep kids out of quarantine. Now, with the new attestation form and the new rules, we must maintain social distancing at lunch. We can only do that in the cohort model. Once we go back to moderate for two consecutive weeks, then that becomes a recommendation, and it becomes when feasible. The Pennsylvania Department of Health, as you know, to this point have said, social distance when feasible, and that is what we did. But now it will be required at lunch. The next quantitative data point I want to point out is, and this is public information. So if you go to the Pennsylvania Department of Health website, many of you already have, and you know what I'm talking about, but a data point that we have to pay attention to is deaths. And you can sort that by Butler County. As of Saturday, when I typed up some of the stats, and they've already changed today, so you'll see those reflected in a parent letter this evening. But as of Saturday, in nine months of the pandemic, 85 people had passed away sadly due to COVID. In the last two weeks, 34% of those deaths have occurred in just the last two weeks, and that number was updated today. Staffing is another quantitative point that is difficult to get a handle on. In schools, it's getting critically low due to quarantines, teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria employees, custodians, administrators, who may be out on a quarantine, who have not, it has nothing to do with school, but maybe they had a potential exposure. We do have what we call super subs in the district that can fill in for teachers, but we only have 23 of them, and some of them have been hit with quarantines. These are extra folks that we hired back in August, and we pay small bonuses for every time that they hit a certain amount of days for subbing for us. Staffing is going to be concerning as we continue into the month of January, and we have to pay close attention to this. It may be concerning even to deliver remote instruction without the cohort, so we'll talk more about that. And finally, many of you know that the CDC has offered as an option to businesses, the general public, that we could lower the quarantine from 14 days to 10 days or seven days with a negative test. Pennsylvania came out this morning and said, well, schools, you could consider this as an option. So we are trying to sort through the quarantine time period and how we would track all of that in a large district with our staff members as well as our students, with our nurses. So we need time to think more deeply about that. So that is my COVID-19 update for that, for now, Mr. President. And as we get into the learning models for January and our plan for January, I'll expound about how that quantitative data drives our decision for what January might look like.
Thank you, Dr. Vitell. In, in the interest that, I don't know if there's any questions specifically to the information that Dr. Vitell has just presented, but it might make more sense when we go to talk about the instruction program, to ask any of those questions, then so we don't have to rehash that, if everyone is okay with that. I'm not seeing anyone really have any disagreement with that. So we'll move on then to the action agenda of our meeting. And before we do that, we always are open to public comment, and there is no public comment this evening, so we'll move in for the approval of the minutes. So I'm going to make this motion that we approve the work session minutes from November second, 2020, and the action meeting minutes from November ninth, 2020, and also the Treasury's report, and those are all in your backup. So that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. Was that Mr. Wooderson?
Sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions or comments on those items? Seeing none, please, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
He's muted.
He's, he's a yes.
Okay.
Looks like he's having some trouble with his mute, so.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to administration action, and I will take this one as well. And I will make the motion that we approve the following. Board policies, approve the following board policies, as provided in your backup. Policy nine oh two, publications, programs, revised, second and final reading. Policy nine oh three, public participation in board meetings, revised, second and final reading. Policy nine oh seven, school visitors, revised, second and final reading. The Children's Institute Service Agreement, to approve the Children's Institute Services Agreement for Educational and Related Services through July thirteenth, 2021. And finally, revised, phase school reopening health and safety plan. And Dr. Pallano is going to offer some more backup on that, but before that, can I get a second on my motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Hester. Uh, Dr. Pallano, if you could give us some more detail on the revised phase reopening, please.
Good thing. Good evening. As Dr. Vitell mentioned in her previous update, we do have some changes or updates to our health and safety plan to reflect the terminology that the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education are now using to categorize our school guidance. So P D E and the Department of Health will no longer rely solely on the color designations such as green, yellow, and red. This was the terminology that was given to us over the summer in the template that P D E created and utilized and gave to school districts, but we have since moved away from that as a state, county, and school district. So the recommendations are now contained in the current guidance are categorized as low, moderate, and substantial, and they rely on two standard public health measures, which are the incidence rate and the percent positivity of diagnostic testing that you heard earlier this evening. In addition to some of the language and terminology updates, the health and safety plan also now reflects the new face covering order and the associated guidance. So as it was stated previously in the plan prior to any changes, this does remain, of course, that all individuals must wear a face covering unless they have a medical or mental condition or disability documented in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act that precludes them of wearing a face covering in school. However, in the previous guidance, a face shield was mentioned as an appropriate face covering, but that has since been modified and adapted, and the new order indicates that as an alternative to a face covering may include a face shield, and more specific information about that was given. So it now states that a face shield must cover the nose and mouth and extend below the chin into the ears and leave no exposed gap between the forehead and the shield of the headpiece. This is now only an option in situations where wearing a cloth face covering is not otherwise feasible, or there is an exception. This, they did also provide rationale to that, which is accompanied by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, has advised that there's currently not enough evidence to determine how protective a face shield is providing individuals around that person. So because of the gaps where the respiratory droplets may escape. So the CDC does state, however, that a face shield may be an option when an exemption does exist. So of course, wearing a face shield in addition to a face covering is certainly a viable option. We're speaking specifically when it is a face shield only. So we are discouraging face shields only and utilizing that only when in combination with a face mask. So that was a significant change. And then, of course, as Dr. Vitell mentioned previously, when we are in substantial and operating under the conditions of the attestation form that was signed, schools may allow students to remove their face coverings only for three specific reasons, one being eating or drinking when spaced six feet apart, so that is the social distancing she spoke to earlier, when wearing a face covering creates an unsafe condition, of course, and when there is at least six feet of separation during a face covering break that lasts no longer than 10 minutes. So all of this updated guidance is now included in the district's health and safety plan. So that's all I have, unless you have questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Pallano. Are there questions from the board or comments? I am not seeing any, not seeing anyone. So with that, we will, we have a motion and a second. No questions or comments, so we will look to call the roll, Lisa.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action, and this is our return to school model. I'll take this one. I will make the motion that we approve the return to school instruction model, to approve the return to school instruction model as provided by the superintendent for the month of January two thousand twenty, or, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one. That is my motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Dr. Vitale?
Yes, I have provided the board with a plan for January, and I want to preface with our public and especially our parents that this is a tentative plan. I know everyone would like a plan that would be solidified and in stone, but as we know, these updates from our state and the rules keep changing weekly based on community transmission and based on other factors. So we spend a lot of time planning, and so this is tentative, but we would like to share this with our parents this evening if the board approves it. And here is what we would be looking at for instructional models in January, and I would remind the public there are a lot of factors that have to take place and need to occur this month in order for this to happen, but our intent is and will always be for those who choose the instructional model that we have an option for them, and for those that choose that model and their children learn best that way, we would like to continue with such a model. In January, we're going to recommend a cohort in different phases. So we would go back to cohort in grades K through six, beginning on January fifth. Why not January fourth? Because on the fourth, we need time to gather from parents if there is any community spread with student COVID cases that they are not reporting to us right now. So on the fourth, K through six would work remotely, and we would begin cohort on the fifth. And again, all of these details will be in a letter this evening if the board should approve it. Students in cohort B would come on that Tuesday, and then cohort A on Wednesday, and we would rotate, and that first Friday back for elementary students would not be a remote Friday. There is no school on January eighteenth, as this is a semester break. Teachers are in session for clerical and to update grades, so there would not be students either remote or in person on January eighteenth. Grades seventh through twelfth, we would be looking for all students to work remotely until January thirteenth. That gives us more time with the teenagers to assess COVID cases and the spread with teenagers. As we know, the percentages with children ages eleven and up are much higher to date than they are with our ages five to ten. So we need more time to assess with our secondary students the potential of holiday spread and winter break spread and how many student cases we have, as well as with both K six and seven twelve, we need time to assess, do we have the staff? Because even if our staff is being very careful at work, there is so much community spread. As, as I've reported earlier, we have seven staff that have COVID and children aren't in session, and so we need to make sure when the staff returns on the fourth that we have the available staff to teach. So grades seventh through twelfth cohort would begin on January thirteenth. Again, there is no school on January eighteenth for secondary students either. This is a tentative plan to get us what we hope would be closer at some point to five days back in person. In order to move to the five-day in-person model, I'll remind you that, again, Butler County must be in moderate transmission level for two consecutive weeks. I know that must be frustrating for parents and for many of us. It's frustrating for me. We like nothing more than to have the children here with us, and we do know they're safe with us, and so we want to do everything we possibly can. But if you listen to the interviews by Dr. Fauci, the CDC, and many other public health leaders in the state, when you have high community spread, it will come into your buildings, and it will be disruptive. No matter how many mitigations we have, these temporary closures will continue to be disruptive. When we have a temporary closure, grades seventh through twelfth, parents may not like it, none of us do, but they can pivot a little easier with teenagers who might be able to be left at home alone. That's very difficult to do with elementary schools, and so if we're forced to look at temporary closures in January, we know that will be very disruptive to our parents and our families because of childcare issues. Additionally, this is all tentative because the rules could change on us again. So even though we fully intend to come back in cohort in January, this could change by tomorrow. Know that we've put a lot of time and thought into this plan, but it could be taken out of our hands by new rules or new mitigations by the state. We want to remind parents that even in the cohort model in the month of January, that the Seneca Valley COVID-19 dashboard, once we're back to any form of in-person, even in cohort, we'll continue to update that, but it's only as good as the parents that report to us. That is done in a confidential manner with our nurses. We also went to the dashboard so that we weren't sending out letters every day, and we felt we could maintain better student privacy and staff privacy with the dashboard as well. I know it can be frustrating for parents when they look and say, well, before you went to remote, you had little to no cases in your elementary. I will remind you again what the local experts are telling us, and who are they? They are doctors. They are medical doctors and infectious disease experts. They are telling us that could be misleading because we don't know if young children have it and they're not displaying symptoms. We don't know if they're not getting tested, if maybe their symptoms are mild, and so we can't assume we don't have elementary cases. I know it can be frustrating for parents because also children are not impacted from, all, all the experts are sharing, don't appear to be impacted as much as maybe teenagers. But we, we have to keep in mind there's a bigger picture here than just the elementary COVID cases. Our community transmission, we went to four to five cases a day on average to well into the one hundreds cases on average per day. So community transmission rate, we will be following closely. We will continue to follow the Butler County cases on a fourteen-day rolling average. We must follow now the recommendations, the chart of temporary closures until we get out of substantial, where then we can have a little more discretion on household contacts and cases within the same home, but for now, we must follow this chart. And staffing continues to be a concern. Staffing is critically low due to quarantines and FF-CRA leaves. Family First Coronavirus Relief Act quarantines or childcare issues where people are permitted to take those days, that expires at the end of this month, so we hope that may get better in January, but it could be renewed by the feds, we don't know. And as a school district, we can't select not to follow that, the FF-CRA. There are many other considerations that are always taken into account as we're looking at such a plan. We ask again for our parents' patience. We know this is not easy for anyone. We've had parents threaten to move. You know, I don't want anyone to move out of our school district, but I would remind you that pretty much everybody's in remote, and so, you know, what is the alternative? We know that being in full remote learning for extended period of time, for an extended period of time is very difficult on our youngest learners to sit in front of a screen for hours on end. We are empathetic. What is the alternative? We know that it's difficult for teenagers not to be able to connect and have the social pieces that they have in our schools. I would ask the community, what is the alternative? We have high community transmission. I am not an alarmist. I listen to the medical experts and I follow the numbers, and we will continue to make decisions on the numbers. We must follow the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. When they say these are no longer recommendations, six feet of social distancing at lunch, we must follow that, Plexiglas or not. When they tell us these are the new face masking requirements, we must follow those. There is no discretion. And so I share in your frustration as a mom, I share in your frustration. I mean, in my entire career, there's nothing worse than coming into empty buildings. That's not why we signed up to be educators. Our teachers want to be here, and they are coming into work every day. They want to be here with kids. They miss the kids, but we have to do this safely. And as Dr. Fauci has said and Dr. Olsterholm from CIDRAP has said, if your community transmission is high, it's not safe for children to be in buildings. So let's not take their words out of context. We have staff to protect. I am not afraid to be here, but I am not standing in front of twenty to thirty kids every day. So I think we need to extend some grace to our teachers in many of these cases and be empathetic. I know this is hard. We are all living it and dealing with it in different ways, but yelling and getting angry at one another is not going to make the virus any better, and it's not going to lower our COVID numbers. And while many still feel, well, it's not kids that are being impacted, it is kids that are spreading it, and it is us that are spreading it when we are out in the public. So what is the school's part in protecting vulnerable populations of people? What is the school's part in protecting the elderly? Those are the questions that we have to ask. How can we balance safety with education? Education is a top priority in this school district. Many, many of our parents have rallied behind our teachers and rally. I get a lot of positive emails, too, and I'm very proud of those, but I think our attitudes towards this means a great deal to our students. Our children are watching us to see how empathetic we are and how we are handling it, and some of us are not handling it well, and the kids see it. So I would just ask that you be patient. If we can come back in cohort in January, we have a plan. We will send it to every parent tonight, but it is tentative, and between now and the January eleventh board meeting, it could all change again. But it is my job to plan, and it is my job to prepare, and our team has done that. So we present this plan to you, Mr. President and board members, knowing that if we have to change between now and January eleventh and go back to full remote in January, we may have to. We will be monitor, monitoring the numbers. We haven't seen the Thanksgiving holiday numbers yet. The doctors are telling us those will come out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, maybe this weekend, maybe sooner. So a lot could happen after tonight. We're doing our very best, and we may have to change even from cohort back to remote in January. We hope that's not the case, but it will all depend on community transmission, and it will all depend if we can get back to moderate. We don't have to be in moderate to run cohort. We can be in substantial, but there are many other factors involved, like do we have the staff? Are they on a quarantine? Do they have COVID? Are they on FF-CRA leave? Now, that's due to expire, so we'll have to wait and see if it's renewed by the feds. We presented you with the plan that we think is safe. We've presented you with the plan where elementary students are coming back first in cohort and then secondary, and we can proceed with caution. We miss our children, we miss our students, and we're doing the very best that we can, so we continue to ask this community for grace. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. I'm going to look around the screen to see if there's any board members with questions or comments. Mr. Nickel?
I, I just, I wanted to reiterate something that I mentioned, I believe, in our last gathering to all those that are, that are attending. I mean, there are, and if you look at our board packet, there are many, many emails from parents who say, I want my children back five days a week. There aren't as many right now of parents who say, I want to be in full virtual because that's where we are. I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes that we are hearing from you, we do hear you. The goal is to get our students back as, as soon as possible into at least cohort and back to five day a week, but to do it as Dr. Vitale said, in a safe fashion and adhere to and follow the guidance from the medical professionals. So just echoing my support for the plan that Dr. Vitale and the administration has put forward, and as she says, it's a, it's a shifting environment each and every day, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any other board members? Seeing none. I, I'll echo what Mr. Nickel said and what Dr. Vitale said. This is a, a community spread problem that we, as a community, need to, to get to the moderate. We, we, substantial is just not making it. We had over five hundred students in quarantine when we were in that moderate range still. So when we look at this, it, it makes it much more difficult. You know, we need to, to improve that community spread so that we can get back to, to class. We, we want the kids in school, that's always our first priority. So I'll give it one more look around the room. I know it looked like there were some issues with some technology, so I'll look around again for one more time for any questions, comments from board members. And seeing none and hearing none, then we'll call the, the question.
Mr. Nickel? Mr. Hester? Mr. Wooderson? Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Jacobs, we cannot hear you. Could you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll look to go to personnel. Mr. Wooderson?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, under Personnel Action, I'd like to make the following motion to approve the appointments, the leaves, merit, and retirement, this having been discussed in executive session prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much for the motion, Mr. Wooderson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Hester. Since this was discussed in executive session, we'll move right to the roll call. Lisa, if you will, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We are in receipt of, there's over two pages of communication that we've all received, and I'm, I'm certain that we've all reviewed it. As Mr. Nickel had stated before, you know, there's some people that are in support of where we are, there's others that want to go back to in-person, we understand that, and that's what we're going to continue to strive for. So I would look around the, the screen to see if there's any other item for the good of the order, and I am not seeing any. So I will bring up two quick things. One is the committee assignments for this coming year. As always, we'll put that out in January, so in the next couple of weeks, if there is any committee assignments that anyone is, is truly interested in, please get in touch with me. I'll then review it with Mr. Nickel, and we'll put that out for everyone's approval in January. The other issue I'd like to bring up is the Peasars election. I finally got notification that they are going to mail the Peasars ballots on December tenth. The voting is allowed to start the eleventh, and all ballots will need to be received by December thirty-first. I am hopeful that, you know, I'll be able to get the, the word out. You'll also be seeing some communications. I just was notified today that my, that I was not the one to get the PSBA nomination, they did give it to my competitor, so I'm going to have an uphill battle. So anyone that you know in any school district throughout the Commonwealth, please let them know that I am running and I'm the better candidate to vote for. I'll be sending some information out through all the IUs and, and things like that, trying to get my message out as well. So after that, is there any other item for the good of the order? And... And again, seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wooderson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. All those in favor of adjournment, please hit the five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.